Hey, I'll call the meeting to order. This is a special budget meeting. And a regular select board meeting that will follow immediately after this, we will take that into consideration and approve matters from our other meetings. Right here, a motion to adopt the agenda.
You?
I would make that motion.
That's okay.
Any comments or questions by the board? All in favor? Any opposed? Fair. The next one is budget discussions. And this Thursday night, where do we stand?
Basically, there's anybody else planning on coming tonight, Paul?
Um, I see Chief Kerber's on Zoom. Alan said he'd be here shortly and um, Devin from the rescue squad said she's been up here five days. So in our last budget discussion, we talked about the bridge um, replacement fund. I had proposed moving it down from sixty thousand to forty-five thousand, but the consensus on the board at that meeting was to leave it at sixty thousand. So I've circulated a revised highway post-budget that has that by something sixty thousand. It's the only number I changed on that budget.
Oh, that's on the first page?
Yeah, it's about three quarters of the way down on the first page. Under construction.
Oh, yeah, construction bridge repair. Construction bridge repair. Yeah, we were under on that for a number of years and it caught us a little bit there a while back. And that's sixty thousand. Do we have anything left in that line item?
We do. We have a hundred and forty-two thousand and change in that, in that account.
A hundred and forty-two thousand left in there. That's sixty, it'll put us at two hundred.
It just felt like if the bridge wasn't up and something happened that once I got doing it, if something came up that we needed something, we wouldn't have much money there.
Right. I uh, kind of agree with that. I'm still holding my breath on thirty-one bridge. It's good to be prepared.
Yeah.
In case the town has to come up with any type of a match. At least we'll have the money in the budget and it won't make us take things from another line item.
Well, they have eleven bridges, so while we're done this one, I'm sure there's gonna be another bridge coming up pretty soon. We have a lot of bridges to take care of.
In the future, as you get up there, you can throttle it back a little bit if the board wants to, but right now it's probably pretty good to keep.
Yeah, I've also asked um, the library to come. You asked me to have them come. Um, Aaron Kerber from the fire department is on Zoom again. Uh, the rescue squad folks told me that they were gonna attend by Zoom.
By Zoom?
Yep.
I got the library's budget in here. I'm sorry, I'm a little unprepared. My mother passed away Thursday afternoon, so I, I've been a little bit down.
So sorry.
Um, thank you. I'm just a little unfair. Been very extremely busy lately. No, I have the budget in here.
Whoever?
Yeah.
We did.
We're going to use one.
Thank you. Okay. Mm-hmm. I'm doing those. Thank you, Val. Library budgets, I'm a little status quo except for everything that you on salaries and all that stuff, is that correct?
Yes.
Last year, we put in what you wanted completely and didn't mess with it.
We enjoyed that, thank you. Thank you.
Well, we did. We did. I mean, we had that to throttle different budgets back throughout to, for the town. But last year was, was a big one with, with our rescue squad. Going up substantially. Questions on, anybody on, on the uh, library budget?
Explain it.
Can you explain anything in it other than?
Um, the, the change to salaries was just um, the library board voted to do the cost of living adjustment for twenty-twenty-five. Um, and there was some slight changes because we didn't have quite enough hours in there to cover sick time, vacation time, and library programs. So there was a couple of hours added to a couple of staff lines, um, just to make sure we have the coverage we need. Uh, just in case anybody ever takes all their vacation. Hasn't happened yet. And then unfortunately, I had to adjust social security and retirement to, to reflect the salaries. Uh, the health insurance was the biggest jump, that number we got from Paul. We had a five hundred dollar increase to our library materials budget just to try to cover some of the increases in book prices we're seeing so that hopefully we don't have to buy fewer books um, than the previous year.
I forgot what you said, was it five hundred dollars?
Five hundred on the, on the materials.
Okay, gotcha.
Um, we increased a thousand dollars on the telephone line, that's also our internet. And we were part of uh, State Department of Libraries Fiber Connect project um, that we've been on for many years that kept our um, internet costs extremely affordable and that project has come to an end. So now we're having to pay more for our um, internet than we have that.
Well, do you have it off the top of your head what the number is? Can you remember it?
That we pay a month? I think it's like two hundred and eighty-nine dollars a month.
Imagine it's quite up there.
Cause we have really high-speed fiber optic, just because of the amount of traffic we have. Our library automation system runs off of it and then, you know, in the summer, well, sometimes have fifteen, twenty people in there on the wifi, so, so we gotta keep it really zippy.
Yeah. We kinda need to know it so that we can justify it.
And that's not, that increase that, that the board put in is not gonna still cover a hundred percent of our expenses. But the state of Vermont, when they canceled the project, gave us some grant money because we had to replace all of the state equipment we had. Um, and they put a little extra in the grant so that we could not do the full increase in one year. So we have a little bit of grant money to subsidize that expense so that we can notch it up a little bit over a couple of years before it gets, so that we're not having it all hit our budget at once.
Good. Very good.
So, so this is an incremental step in, in eventually covering the full cost um, that is being subsidized by that grant.
Okay. Good.
Um, and then the other increase we had was five hundred dollars to the electricity line because the last two fiscal years, we've gone over budget on our electric and it looks like we're in line to do that again in the current fiscal year, so we thought we better bump that up a little bit.
Now, it might go up a little more too when they get into the hydro and renegotiate the contract with that.
When you look at our electric bill every month and so much of it is covering the different programs they started because of the flood damage. You know, we're paying a couple hundred dollars a month in all these different programs that they have. Um, so if there's another big flood, I'm sure it'll go up again too.
Yep, heat pumps down there.
Yep, we do. Um, we use them in the summer for cooling. We don't use them in the winter for heating unless we're having issues with the fuel.
Okay. How's the fuel going?
Um, that is on the town budget, so that one I'm not sure.
Okay, that is in our budget.
Yes.
Yep. And we get that on a pretty decent price. Any questions, you guys?
How many years left do we have paying?
On the, on the bond?
Yeah.
Building bond?
Um, I don't know without looking at it.
The construction was in twenty-sixteen. I don't know when the bond took effect, but.
Was that a thirty-year bond?
Thought it was.
Fifteen.
I thought it was twenty, but I could be wrong.
It wa, it wasn't, yeah, it was lengthy.
They didn't have much of the grant list at all.
No, I noticed that too.
Yep.
I personally, I don't like bonds because I just haven't heard time paying interest. Facts is on interest. But there is times when, when you really do need, need them. Just to try and fight that.
Yeah, and that's why we, we fund the capital fund so that if we could split it fifty-fifty with paying perhaps and half in the bond, let's pick that down a little bit.
Yeah, I remember when we did that, I was on the board.
Yep.
Alan, we're um, in the library budget. Things went up to like five hundred bucks and five hundred bucks. Plus the living on the salaries from the twenty-twenty-five rate. They added a couple more hours for their assistant and clerk.
It's nice.
And that's where we stand. Last year was two hundred and one thousand. Here's fifteen. Fourteen thousand. Probably social security. Salary. Any questions? Anybody for the library? Give you time, Alan? You good?
Well, get up the bookkeeper payment because we hadn't up to that since two thousand sixteen. Um, so.
What'd that go up from?
Um, that went.
Twelve hundred to two thousand.
Twelve.
Twelve hundred and two thousand.
She sent a request.
Yeah, eight hundred bucks.
Yep.
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 And all the math breaking down, so.
It's pretty normal.
Yeah, and, and she's assimilated some more items as far as the bookkeeping went, so, so more than fair.
Are you happy with?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. All right. No more questions for anybody for, for the library budget?
Certainly appreciate the library, I know you do.
That's okay. Well, you can stay if you want, but thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And um, on town meeting day, if you do come to the fire department and, and to the town meeting, it'd be good if you could to help explain if anybody has.
Fairness.
Yeah.
Yep, and we've come some years and not others, so we'll make a point to come this year.
Yeah. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you guys. Have a good night.
You too.
Everybody get home safely.
Go home and shovel. Onward. Did you talk about the fire department budget?
Um, we did not, but Aaron Kerber is online, I think, prepared to to talk about it. If you're able, Aaron.
This is too, this is for the select way though, right?
Yes, I'm there.
Hi, Aaron.
Hello?
So I gave them the captain's report that you sent me this afternoon in the the handout on the VFIS insurance.
Yes. Thank you for that. Uh, I guess I'm jumping in to see if there's any lingering questions sit um, on the proposed budget stuff, um, be it the increase uh, for the length of service award program for recruitment and retention purposes. Um, the insurance, I guess, and then uh, any other questions that I could possibly answer if you had, having anything to add?
Well, I had some time when I was with my mother. And I talked
By comparison, sir.
To a few of the um, people that are on different fire departments around.
Yep.
And I'm beginning to agree with them on that uh, twenty thousand that Aaron wants to put in the budget for the kind of like re- retirement or keeping people in their system for retaining health. I've really talked to a lot of departments, a lot of people on departments. And uh, it, it, they think it's a fantastic idea that it would help. That's my opinion. I don't know how you guys feel about that part, cause that's the first thing that people are gonna see when they come in and they're gonna ask all kinds of questions.
Yeah.
So for.
Go ahead. I'm, I'm in favor of of the program because it is a hundred percent volunteer.
And I think
If it makes sense.
We've had some great people that have come through and haven't stayed and gone on to, we've trained them and gone on to other places, so maybe this will help us keep some people, some of the young blood here for longevity.
That's what I'm getting feedback from, from a lot of different volunteer fired fire uh, department people from around the area. How do you feel about it, Alan? You think it's good? That will, so we'll keep that in that part of the budget.
The combined with truck budget?
Yeah.
It's like a saddlebag.
It's like a saddlebag. Insurance. I didn't really get a chance on the insurance that much to talk about any insurance companies.
Yeah.
But um.
I think we, we say this every year, though, I think we need to get together with some insurance companies and have conversations about this across the board in our town. Do.
Because we can.
I know the biggest, biggest thing that I've seen is that in the coverage documents that VLCT provides just quite don't have the niche um, insurance to help cover us as like the volunteer stuff as that policy that I was uh, have trying to, you know, quote it into that budget. Is to pick up those pieces that leave the volunteers um, open for, you know, um, issues with, you know, using their personal vehicle to respond to from a, a call. Um, and such as that, um, even their private equipment, you know, if they bought a piece of equipment that they wanted for themselves to have that, you know, it's a piece of firefighting equipment, it's, the town's insurance will not cover that. However, this insurance would um, cover it if there was damage stolen or otherwise. So that's, that, that's where that program really is written towards, is towards the fire departments and the, the specialty that we do provide for services.
Better explanation and um, how much did that go up, Paul? Remember from last year to this year on that insurance?
That's included in that five thousand dollar increase rate, Aaron.
Yes, so the way the break of the year would be, um, if we were to try and write coverage for July, it would cover the uh, changeover to that insurance. The next year would see a little bit of a blip of a bump because it would be, I think we'd have the, a full year of coverage or something written, cause I think, right, well, it de, it depends on the date, I guess, because if the uh, VLCT does not let us go um, till Janu, I believe it's, is, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Donaldson, January one is our ch, uh, changeover date for VLCT.
Yeah.
Or their, their coverage is, so we would have a s, change, um, I, I would fight for, for as soon as July one if we can get it there and then that, that would cover all of July one, July one, um, from this coming fiscal year to the next. Um, but the, the insurance also includes that agreed value on the fire truck, so instead of it being a modified actual cash value where uh, VLCT says, you know, you had this accident with the truck, we're gonna total it, but here's your check for, you know, the old one we're trying to replace right now, here's a check for, at best case, eighty thousand dollars. Um, the agreed value coverage that VF, VFIS could provide would actually write us a check up to a million dollars to replace that truck. So that's, that's where the, one of the bigger components of that is that agreed value. Uh, the property and casualty that's included in it is that the piece that helps pick up for coverage on the volunteers and uh, our equipment.
Imagine insurance company doing that, makes no sense to me.
For more risks.
A lot more risk.
More money.
Little bits of money, it's not, and you're paying out more than you're ever gonna get back in, seems like a.
Poorly dependent with that. That's, that's, that, that's all insurance is, it's great to risk out with time and.
And so they've, they have been running that policy, the agreed value stuff for many, many years. I know uh, West Rowland has it written into their uh, insurance program through VFIS for the fire department and they've been well over a decade, they've been writing that policy for uh, West Rowland.
Have they ever had to use it?
They have not. Uh, the only thing that I know they've had to use was they had, they had a um, water, uh, they had one of their new trucks hooked up to a fire hydrant and ended up putting gravel um, into the pump and had to do quite a bit of work to that truck and uh, the insurance company picked it up, the VFIS picked it up right away and got the repairs done. I think, I believe they actually ended up going back to uh, the main cause of the um, issue, but uh, without even question, they picked it right up and ran with it.
And our insurance that you have on it now won't do that?
I am not a hundred percent sure if they will or not. Um, I said their language does not always spell out exactly what they'll cover. From what I see, that every now and again, there's just obligatory, you know, we'll figure it out when we get there type stuff. When it comes to the fireside stuff.
A lot of exemptions, a lot of certain things that's.
Insurance is.
It would be nice to know the difference between what we're, what our insurance is and what this new insurance is, if they're Catholic, you know, same or a little difference, if that's a lot better, you're, you're thinking?
I mean, I, I think the, the one thing that Chief Kerber's asking for is this agreed cost insurance that he feels with the way equipment is out pricing everybody that this, this coverage will, will ensure it for the agreed cost, not, but not a depreciated value.
So, but we'll still keep them on our insurance.
I'm sorry?
But we'll still have insurance for them, the town, town?
Not if we switch the, not if we switch the fire department from VLCT to this other company. No.
That would be their insurance company now, the town's insurance company for the fire department. Equipment.
Yeah. Yeah, it would just be switching from, you know, taking the fire department um, properties, including the firehouse, the um, personnel and the apparatus and putting it under VFIS's uh, insurance policy instead of VLCT, still, still paid for by the town of Pontle if you so choose.
Aaron, I have a question that you alluded to. Next year, there'd be a bump, pretty good bump up on that insurance policy, is that what I heard you say? If we did this?
Uh, if we, if this, so I have it factored for us picking it up July or, yeah, for somewhere between October and January of next year. If we were to pick it, um, yeah, so if we picked it up Janu, or uh, October, between October and January, if we were able to get VLCT to let us go, um, we would have full, full on there and I think that from the quote I had, it would be another probably two thousand dollars um, next year in the budget without any increase from them. So it would take, I think it's eighteen thousand dollars for the following year. Minus any changes that, you know, the insurance companies throw out there at us.
And we're at what right now, Paul? A year for that insurance? Um, I thought it was like sixteen, wasn't it? Sixteen.
Might be fifteen, sixteen.
It was.
Last year was budgeted at oh, I think eleven thousand or twelve thousand.
Eleven thousand. That was quite a bit. Oh, that's a, that's a big ball.
Then the biggest piece is, is that agreed value. Um, taking the trucks from their like, uh, Mr. Donaldson stated, their depreciated value to um, the two big engines both being insured at a million dollars apiece. The um, mini pumper at five hundred thousand dollars and then all the other um, trailers and smaller trucks are actually, it would be insured at what a brand-new replacement, replacement cost would be, so there would be, you know, for those, we would pay the deductible of a thousand dollars and they would write us a check for the new piece of apparatus. Um, versus right now, of course, we'd have to take whatever depreciated value VLCT gives us towards them. Yeah, and see what we can do with that money.
Gamble.
That's a gamble.
Mm-hmm, that is quite a bump up there.
Consistently clocked it, they still don't check.
How do you feel about that?
Well, so why don't we, we, we table? Table it and we can discuss it.
Well, that's not, that, that, we can't discuss that in private. That has to be an open meeting because it's not litigation or personnel matters.
What do you feel, Paul? For insurance purposes?
I mean, I honestly, I don't know enough about the, the I haven't done any research on, does this work? Do they actually pay your agreed upon value? So I feel really.
Why don't we just do a little bit more research and get back to it next, our next budget meeting?
Yeah, but we are running out of time.
We are.
We are definitely running out of time. We got one week.
Monday to twenty-seventh Friday, Paul?
I have to have my, all my stuff to the um, printing company by next Friday.
The twenty-seventh Friday?
It's twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. So you got basically a week.
I would make the motion to, to, to decline this, this year until we have time to, to look into the the projected benefits and risk reward.
The motion.
Motion.
How do you feel about it, Alan? There's a motion on the floor.
We know what the bene, the benefits are if it, if we pay it, that if something happens, so it's a gamble, if something, nothing happens, we're in the same boat, but if something does happen, we backtrack a day, we don't have that insurance for a million, so that's gonna be, that's the.
Well, that's up to me, right? It all depends on what the stated values.
Right.
So it's a seven, lost November, a seven thousand dollar increase over what we normally pay for one year.
Right.
Nine thousand dollars.
Five thousand.
And then next year it'll be a.
It's not like we can't always switch back and say try it for a year.
Try it for a year?
A lot of money if there's an accident.
That's a problem with fucking gamble. If we don't, something happens, we're gonna regret it if we we don't.
How many accidents have the fire department?
It's silly to do it and then take it out again, though. If you're gonna do it, you're gonna do it, it seems silly.
You can always switch anything.
And there's a motion on the floor, a little bit premature, Mark, so if there's a if I don't hear a second to the motion and the motion is, is dropped on the floor, is there a second to Mark's motion? Not hearing a second to the motion, the motion is dropped. How do you feel about it?
I agree. I think we should go with at least a year.
All right, one year? How do you feel about it?
I mean, we're not gonna put it in, it's for a year, we're just gonna vote that, we're gonna put it in and next year for discussion, we can say, let's take it out and not, we're not gonna put in it, it's only good for a year, correct? It's gonna go in, it's gonna go in.
It'll be until July first of next year.
If I could just add, like I said before, it's just uh, if for us, beyond the protection of the trucks, it's now protecting my members way better than we currently are. Um, and I'll just throw it right out there, I one of my members, you know, responded to the firehouse, had their windshield. One of my members, you know, responded to the firehouse, had their windshield. Taken out by a branch while they responded to the firehouse for said uh storm. And they ended up having to eat, putting glass in their vehicle all by themselves, whereas this insurance program would have taken and paid for the deductible to get that glass taken care of.
We don't currently have that.
We do not. I would have to ask the board to pay pay for it out of the goodness of their heart, not the insurance company.
Right. Um. Do you okay with it for a year? You want to try it for a year? You want to try it for a year? Are you okay with it for a year?
So be it.
All right, let's leave it in the budget at that part. Now, the next part. Is. For the fire department to hold a big ticket item. He has all his smaller stuff that's usually comes up every year. It's it's. Going from a hundred and fifteen thousand to a hundred and fifty thousand where he really wants to be. Um.
So that that number as we uh we've realized over the year or year and a half, two years, three years, now that we've gone through this pandemic and all that. We are not even coming close or have not come close to match the percentage of rise in the cost of this apparatus, so.
Aaron, what do you? What do you have? What do you have in your budget for equipment replacement as of this moment?
Uh, in the fund for? New fire trucks?
Yeah, your your equipment replacement. That's what this is. It's not just for fire trucks, it's for your equipment replacement.
Yeah.
That's that's everything.
So as of. Last report I have. Which I believe is accurate, my apologies, it would be of August of. Last year was two hundred and sixty four thousand dollars and change.
I think he just dropped.
What's that? Has he gone last year?
We're gonna need him to push for this because it's a big jump.
It is, and with the jump on the twenty thousand for that, that's gonna be a tough one. That's. It'll bring them up to three hundred and seventy nine thousand if we keep that at status quo of a hundred and fifteen. But I got it. Where is he?
Can you hear us, Aaron, now?
My apologies. Working working off my phone, so I'm sitting outside of a base or a basketball game right now. Um, so two hundred and sixty four thousand and change is what I show currently as of August. Twenty twenty four.
And if you went. If we just, I'm just saying, if we stay at status quo. A hundred and fifteen thousand, next year you'd have three hundred and seventy nine thousand.
At the hundred, so the new truck was that is the first round number was one point one million.
Oh, what new truck? What new truck?
The.
What new truck are you talking about?
The one that's scheduled for two thousand twenty seven.
Oh, that was that million dollar truck you want.
Yeah, it's one point.
The board, we discussed that. And the board uh agreed not to go after that right now because. Of our priorities are higher and we would have to bond for it. And we really are gonna have to bond probably for a town garage. And board. Board decided that we aren't aren't gonna do that right now, Aaron.
Copy that. Uh, just for informational purposes, though, the estimate came on that truck at one point one million dollars currently. So if we're chasing that truck to pay for it in cash. By the time we have the money, which we're looking at at least. At the current one, one a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, we're at least another six years out. And at that rate, that truck will still be well in excess of one point one will be. Uh, the rate of those trucks have spent anywhere between five to seven percent every year.
But. We would hopefully by then. Have a new town garage, settle down and have a better direction on where. Our budget's going to be without going up thirty percent a year. Or having having another, having a uh. Uh, two bond issues. If not possibly three, because we have one with the library right now. So we gotta look, I'm just saying, we gotta look at the whole entire budget, Aaron.
Yeah.
And we do, because because we're responsible for everything there. And we already have a uh twenty year bond. On the library that started in twenty sixteen. Paying, I think it's around forty four thousand a year or something like that.
By the library.
I might add my numbers from roughly nineteen thousand. Oh, nineteen thousand. We're paying nineteen thousand a year on that. Yeah, we got a lot of ways to go on that bond and I do not, I'm wondering if I can pay in taxes on interest.
I mean, that flip side of that is if we don't budget more, we're always gonna have to bone.
Right, on the flip side, you're absolutely right.
Especially if it's going up seven percent on the new truck, it's gonna be seven percent.
That one's asking for, but maybe some if you don't go forward, you're going backwards.
Yeah, just because we got that twenty thousand in there and his his insurance is going up too and. Instead of leaving it at one fifteen, maybe maybe go up to one twenty five or one thirty this year. And then next year, like what they're doing with everybody's salaries, bumping them up and bumping them up year after year.
So it gets a raise, but then hopefully.
Yeah, and then the following year, we can get them to a one fifty.
I'm amendable to that. I the the biggest one that I have um besides this truck fund was. A hundred percent the, well, last year with the making sure we maintain that firehouse. Um, but the money that twenty thousand for that length of service award is a hundred percent uh the last. Few years things I've been shooting at, so. Next year, I don't foresee any other big asks other than, you know, wanting to get that truck fund up there to that one fifty, so.
Yeah, maybe that maybe that would be the route we'll go, Aaron. A little bit at a time increments to get you there.
Worst for me, sir.
How do you feel about that, Alan?
Good plan.
Good plan, good plan. Good with it, Mark? Take that from one fifteen and go to one thirty, increase it fifteen thousand? Do the insurance. And do. So in the budget that he's proposed, the only thing that would change out of his budget would be the fire. Um, equipment fund replacement.
And Aaron will, Aaron, you'll be there for questions and stuff too anyways, if people have questions about all this.
I will have as much information as I can have prepared and ready to rock and roll.
Might be a good way to pump up some people for volunteering them.
Yeah.
For sure.
People I've talked to, Aaron, really did like that uh. Length of service award.
It's a good idea, definitely.
You know, I gotta be honest with you, I had my eyebrows were. They're way raised way up when I saw it and I'm thinking, what in the world? But the more I. Look at it and discuss it with other fire department personnel. Yeah, it's got me thinking, thinking differently.
Awesome.
All right, you got everything in your budget then right now.
Okay, if you if you have any other questions or concerns that you need answers on, feel free to reach out at any point.
Yeah, Aaron, the only thing you didn't get is your fire equipment fund. It'll go to one hundred and thirty. That's what we'll put out to the public instead of one fifty.
Yeah, I agree, sir, that you have to keep the whole town's interests in in mind, so thank you for that.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Thanks, Aaron. Enjoy the game.
Thank you. I'm going to. Have a great night.
You too.
I if you had any questions um for the regular board, I did provide the captain's report and I will have a end of the year report forthcoming to. The town manager to share with the rest of you.
Okay, thank you, Aaron.
Have a good night.
You too.
Yep.
We made some progress tonight, a lot of progress. I see Debbie from the Pony Rescue Squad has joined the, Debbie is here. Debbie?
Hi. Hi, guys. Sorry I'm late. I'm I'm having a technical difficulty getting things to attach. To send them to Mr. Donaldson. Um. I do have financials, I do have town funding. Um. We had a better year, we're still. We tried to cover as many calls as we could. Um. Bear with me one second. I apologize. Um. We are looking at a slight increase. I know we asked for a lot of money last year. Um. We're still. Down money. Even with insurance and stuff. But we're only gonna, we're only looking for. Fifty dollars this year per capita, which will take it up to. Um. The total that we'd be asking for is one fifty three. From last year and I will send the our profit loss for the year end. I just got it from the accountant today. It's tough with having it so close because she closes the books on December thirty first and. Gets it to me within the two weeks, so that's. Hard sometimes for her to get it to me as quickly as she can.
Debbie, can you repeat that, though? You said fifty dollars per capita?
Yep, which is fifty dollars per person for the town. Based on the two thousand. The last um.
Census.
Census.
And what was the total?
Well. As usual, my computer is, you know, I do it all day long and now that I need it to work right, I don't, it's not working properly. Hang on one second, I'm sorry.
Okay, I thought she said one fifty three.
I think that's what I said, but. Course, when I wanted to open, it's not opening right. There we go. One fifty one, I'm sorry. If I did my calculations right. Based on the town, which I think is three thousand twenty four, if I remember correctly. I don't have everything home with.
Three thousand twenty.
Three thousand twenty, okay. Hey, I'm going on memory.
Last year was one twenty one?
Last year was one twenty six, eight forty.
Yes.
And we're going up to a hundred and fifty one thousand? That one fifty one even?
Yes. It did work out to one fifty one even.
And and what's what's the difference between last year and next year gonna be? I mean, how has it worked out with help, support, volunteers? Number of calls?
Volunteers, we have not gotten any new volunteers. Nobody wants to do it for. Just to be on the department and. Um. Even though we're getting, even though they're getting paid, I mean, most of them have come on as per diems, so they'll they get paid. Um, hourly when they're available. Um. We did a total of. Let me look what my report was. I will get this to you guys before the end of your meeting, so you can all review it. I apologize. Um.
What's your staff rigged down right now? Like, how many full time, how many?
Yep, I have that all in the report. Um, we have. We have a total of thirteen. Thirteen staff, one is full time, one is part time and the rest are per diems. We have three volunteer, we do still have three volunteers. Um, they've been volunteers for over thirty years. We are losing a couple uh staff. Um, one is going into the military, one is on indefinite leave. Due to personal situation. Um, if he gets the situations uh rectified, he will be back. Um.
But these are no one new come from last year.
Nope. Nope, we have advertised, we've had a few people come on, but they're they've not. Worked out in the way we've wanted them to. They're very young people and it's not that that's a deterrent, but. They've not. Shown the progress that we would like them to and. They just aren't work. They're not working out.
Are calls up or down? Are you able to go to more calls than you did last year or is that status quo?
Um, we did. We did a total of three hundred and sixty three calls this year, and I believe that's up from last year. We did only three hundred and twenty. We covered two hundred and fifty five in Pulteney. Um, thirty two in Middletown and we covered eight, only eighteen in of mutual aid, which are surrounding towns, which really isn't that. Many. Um, we brought home fifty nine people, so it's fifty nine people that may have been at the hospital that needed a ride home from the hospital. Um, a lot of them are in town people that didn't have a ride home. Or needed um. More structured care to come home. We're not able to get home other than on a, in an ambulance. Either they need.
Do we get any money for that?
Those are transfers.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do get money. We do get paid for that.
Portion, a portion of it, right?
Um, no, those are actually completely covered. It's the RMAs, it's the re- the refusals to go to the hospital that we only get a portion of. And those I don't, that I do not currently have a number for. I can get that number for you. Um. But those have, those are, those are also less and less that we're getting. That we don't get called, we don't get as many calls out for people not wanting to go to the hospital. Most of the time, people call us, they want us to go to, they wanna go to the hospital.
Okay.
All right, and you'll send that to Paul?
Oh, I'll send it to, I'll send the the the. Report, the town report, the report of call volume and such to Paul. I'll send the. The year end financials, which will show what we spent our money on, what our payroll was. Um. Everything that the the squad spent their money on this year. Um, and I will also send the funding letter to Paul. And I will be at town at town meeting this year again, if anybody has any questions or needs any. Anything answered. We did have a um. A big bill on one of the ambulances this year. Um, the manifold went on one of our ambulances, so we had an eight thousand dollar bill on that. We've had a couple repairs that needed to happen at the garage. You know, the building is fifteen years old, the overhead door, the motors on the um. Door openers have gone, so we're having to replace those things, so. You know, general maintenance on things is. Had to be done too, so we've had that also.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Debbie?
Thank you, thank you for being on.
Yes, Debbie, please come to the town meeting.
Important.
Yes, very important if you if you come.
Yep.
That you come. So that you can explain, since everybody likes to ask questions and.
I don't have a problem with being as transparent as I can be and being as honest as I can be.
Good, good, that's good, good to hear. Okay, no more questions from the board?
I do kinda have one question.
What have you got?
Well. When you submitted your request for the additional money last last year?
Mm hmm.
Did you mean that? The request to last one year? Or in perpetu- in perpetuity? Meaning?
Well, I I. I wish I could say that it the that money would be good for one forever. But unfortunately, uh with my insurance, the insurances go up every year. I mean, I just got the new liability and and. Insurance and it went up three thousand dollars this year from last year. So I wish I could say that we could fund it and. And unfortunately, the general fund and and the insurances, I don't know if anybody follows what the 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 government's doing as far as the. Funding for our insurances, but they're looking in March, they're gonna take three percent away from what Medicare and Medicaid are paying us. And we may lose another. Percentage after that, once don't, once the president changes. So. I wish I could say that we could keep what we have have to ask for help from towns at the same rate all the time. But with the insurances as unstable as they are. It's it's hard for us to say, yes, we can maintain this and. Stay at the same rate all the time when. It's very unstable with the insurance companies.
But a lot of that money we gave too was to hopefully we could get people. But a lot of that money we gave too was to hopefully we could get people in there and get you functionable, functionable so that it was able to. To run, so that's been a tough chore because you haven't been able to get more staff even though the money was there to pay them more?
No, we've been, we have staff, but we've been paying overtime for staff to work, so the payroll, my payroll is, is way up there when you. You'll see it when you see the payroll expense, um, so we've had the staff to cover, we've been covering almost twenty-four seven, there's been a few shifts. That we've been down on, but for the most part, we have been covering twenty-four seven as I. Hope to, to do for everybody in town. So we may not have recruited the staff that we wanted to, but the staff we have, have stepped up and. Covered the town as requested by the town.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Alright, thank you.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Debbie? Hey Debbie, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We'll see you at the town meeting.
Okay, thank you guys, have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank all your help.
You're welcome.
So we have a few changes. It looks like. The whole budget from where we are on this one. Will go up about two, uh, four thousand one hundred and sixteen, is that what I'm seeing? I'm on the general government, the post government. And with Aaron's. Going to one thirty. That's uh, twenty thousand, that's not in his budget. Hers is going up twenty-four thousand one sixty. So the bottom line on this. Right here, it goes up from where it is, four thousand one hundred and sixty. We just shifted money. If we do the increases and stay right where we are. And this one pretty much stays the same, if we stay right there. Everything ends. Right him and Sarah, yeah? Very good. Yeah, it's, it's, it's uh, it's almost, you almost can't control it. With, with uh, you can only control so much, I mean. Your salaries have to go up because. A cost of living. The grocery store, it's out of hand.
We really need to sit down and wait for budget plan and talk about insurance.
Well, next, after this is over, one of the very first things after the board reorganizes. Is we gotta start looking at health insurance.
We do, cause people have to plan.
We gotta cut this budget, that's basically what's really bumping this up as well.
It is, and that's like, that's.
Wanna, I did, I personally, I really didn't want to. Really cut into it, we, we gotta look at it, we have to make some change.
Because we have some big ticket items, if you have the highway department, we talked about the buildings. I think it's not gonna fully fund everything, so we have some big ticket items that.
Thank you. Let's send them one. One, two? And one, two?
That's me, I know, the story of my life.
Uh, we're not in this for the money, we're in it for the town. That's, that's just the way it is. So with that, how do you guys feel?
Same, one thirty or one thirty-five?
On what? One thirty. We went up fifteen thousand. On the truck. Oh, you went one thirty-five?
I thought I did one thirties.
I think it says one thirty.
One thirty-five.
Yeah, sorry, I'll change up.
Make sure that thought if you missed it.
I'll bring that down to under eleven percent. I remember when we fir, I first started this eighteen years ago. And the budget went up. Two point three percent, something like that, and I was having a bit. What I had learned through the years, there are things that you just cannot control. But there is one thing that we have to look at, to your point. We have got, uh, after this is over, we've got to start looking at insurance.
It's really killing us.
Right now, we've got a road crew up. And salaries are up. So now we can look at insurance. And we're up pretty good now. About where we should be in, in perspective with surroundings. Surrounding towns, we're not on the bottom of the ladder.
I did have Paul to check on training, I think we have to make sure, a lot of the new equipment we're getting, that we have training built in that's paid for, for all of us at once. On the new website, the new equipment, he was gonna check and see if they do that, if we have to pay for that, that has to be a little extra, I can't imagine it's. Absorbent amount, but.
Just because five thousand is taken out. Why doesn't come back and then come back again?
Well, just because, I mean, how many times we have been, we need to make sure that, that people are trained on it, because. Anything with technology, it changes a lot. It must will make sure it's in the budget so that we. For everybody to get trained and to.
Well, it's way in the back. Way in the back, but then, close to the last page. Yeah, right on the last page, under fathers.
Yep, that's bottom.
Fifth one up from the bottom.
Increase that, that much?
Uh, yeah, we are gonna increase it to twenty-one, twenty-one thousand. Twenty-four thousand one hundred and sixty.
Especially, that's why I was like.
We're here.
A little disappointed that. She dropped the nineteen percent increase on.
Last year, that was a good question, I guess, I'm thinking.
Yeah, I mean, when you, when you read the, I read the thing this afternoon. The questions that, it doesn't say which way.
What do you mean by that, what are you talking about?
The question on the ballot. The, shall the town approve an additional? Allocation to the Poltony Rescue Squad, any amount, eighty-four thousand.
Right.
Yeah, that goes into the budget, yes, right.
But not every year, just that one year.
Exactly, that's what I.
As I explained to you the other day, traditionally, the select board, if, if it's approved once, they don't. The select board, at least from my, um, experience here. And from what I've been told before we see that, once it's approved once, you don't make the. Them go back every year and ask for an approval every year, unless they want more money. Last year you told them that and they didn't get the right signatures. But this board put it on the warning.
Because it was such a substantial increase.
Alright, so it's, so this, this, this budget request. And it says, this is in addition to the forty-two thousand. Already included in the general fund budget of Article three.
That's something we've always given them, that's what we've always given them.
Yeah, we saw. So, I don't know what, what are you asking?
I don't see that this que- question is in, in.
You, you just, you're discounting exactly what I just said. Traditionally, the select board, if they ask for an increase, the increase carries. Unless they want more money, that's traditionally how it's been treated. So I don't, I don't know why you keep saying that, because if the board is gonna change. Its course of action and how they handle these, then they have to, they have to do that, they can't do it at the last minute. Otherwise, otherwise everyone would have to come back and get a. Every year.
If you're questioning that, then we gotta question the fire departments every year. Because they come back with a increase every year for their fire equipment. Um, the library comes back with increases. And we'd have to question it all, that's why once it's in the budget and it's passed the first time, it stays in the budget. What are you thinking, Alan, you're smoking over there?
I think that's insane.
I do too, considering that we. We haven't. When we talked about the change, we really haven't seen a major change, but I guess she, I don't know, I guess I can look for that and see, when we get the paperwork and see the.
We got a week.
Well, it's not my fault, it's not here in front of me.
I know, but I'm just saying, we had a week.
I mean, if you look at this particular allocation. Two fiscal years ago, you use ARPA money to double their budget. And you said. Prove that you can sustain yourself on that. And then the very next year, they came and said, we can't sustain ourselves on that. We need another forty-two thousand eight hundred dollars. And now they're saying they need another nineteen percent and, I don't know, I mean. Do you give them twenty percent every year?
Well, what I'm thinking. Again, we gotta go steps, like I was explaining to the library. One year we did this, one year we did that for another entity in town, and one year we did this. One year we did this, we did a big one for the rescue squad last year. Maybe we just need to see if they su- can sustain it this year on what we give them. And not have the increase this year, and then look at them next year and see, but on this year's budget. It's more on a couple of salary increases and. The fire department. Trying to keep the people on the fire department, that's what we did for the rescue squad last year. With the eighty-four thousand dollar increase, or eighty-six thousand. This year, we're increasing it twenty thousand for the fire department, to see if we can keep our people, how do you guys feel about that?
I, I think it stays the same as last year, and they should go with their goal to hire more people and reduce their cost over time, that.
What are you thinking over here in the corner, blue sweater?
I don't know, I wish I had the paper in front of me, I tried to write it down, though, they did more, they had one, three hundred and twenty-one calls last year and three hundred and sixty-three calls this year. Paying their staff more, but we're not getting any more. Staff members, so they're paying their staff overtime, a lot of their money is gonna be in salary, which you need. Granted, the building needs to be, be attached to. It's an old building.
They have their own.
I don't think, I don't think we can go nineteen percent.
They have their own, uh, board.
Correct.
And all's we're doing, we aren't running.
Just giving them the chunk of change, it's like.
We're subbing, subbing them. And it's up to the board, just like the library. We s, we approved the library's budget. After we approve it in here, one line item, it's up to the library's board. To disperse all of that money to where they feel it goes.
So they can't come back to us and say, we spent all the money on this, that and this, and now the building's falling apart, our. Our truck is falling apart, we have to make sure that we're. That they're using the money appropriately, I mean, we can't, we, I know we can't do that, but you can't come ask us for more money and say.
Not for a year.
Yeah, it's like. Like get things happen, so we're, we're kinda stuck too, like. What do we do, we give them this, allocate this money, we want them to get more staff, they don't, and then a truck breaks down, they have to. Fix the.
And it's up to their board to figure out how to do the money, so.
Fortunately, it's a.
How do you feel, Alan, what, what, what's your?
I was so, so long with.
You okay with that, keeping it last year?
I do, I'm just saying, everybody else got a little bit of a raise, I don't know, we tried to give just a little bit of a raise and not, nothing, but.
Oh, one year, the library didn't get any. Wait a minute, yeah.
I think, I think they've always given someone.
Yes, they did, I'm sorry if you found that.
I've been here, so the rest is, that's always, um, fire.
The only problem is, is it went up so much.
That's what I'm saying, why can't we do what we did for the five, say, we're not gonna keep it the same, but we're not gonna go from one twenty-six to one fifty-one.
What are you thinking?
One four six to one thirty. A slight raise.
I mean, I just heard, I mean, you weren't quoting, but I just heard three people say, even it, where it is.
Yeah, well, you could, I didn't hear a motion, so I'm just giving my.
No, this is discussion.
Don't have to take it. Give my opinion.
What can, can do?
Yeah, we discuss the matter and come to a consensus and. Everybody can live with the, the, the consensus, then we call it. Are we still at? One twenty-six?
Eight forty.
Eight forty or increase it? Three thousand, uh, one hundred and sixty dollars.
I'm like splitting here a little bit.
You have enough to vote. Oh, you can vote.
Yeah, so we discussed, this is what we discuss, discussions. Were you okay with staying or would you, would you go to one thirty?
Stay, but like I said earlier, if you're not going forward, you're moving backwards, it goes getting more offensive, maybe Cheryl's right, get a little bit.
I feel like we're doing adjusted, doing keep, they are making some gains. The cost of living, so I feel like we're giving them something, but we're not jumping at nineteen percent.
But we haven't seen, seen any force, see how many calls.
We haven't, but she told us.
Yeah, she told us, we had three hundred and sixty-three calls this year. Now, you okay with that, going to one, one thirty?
Nah, she had three hundred and twenty-one.
So, so, so they're asking for fifty percent. Fifty dollars per capita. The one twenty-six, what they get now is forty-two dollars per capita.
Paulie Sager, and are you okay?
Well, I'm just saying, why don't you come up with a number as opposed to giving one thirty?
Number per capita is what I'm saying, now, what would that number be? Who can you figure it out, can you figure out one thirty divided, yeah, per capita? With the math whiz.
Did you take trigonometry or geometry?
Here, our budget was here.
That's forty-three dollars and five cents per capita.
Yeah, we're up a dollar, dollar five. Okay, let's, let's punch that in at one thirty. Instead of one fifty-one. We'll go from one twenty-six to one hundred and thirty. Forty-three dollars and five cents. Now, can you just kind of tell us right there and we'll squiggle it out and put in, instead of ten point nine five, we can squiggle it out. Do we have any money in the line items for a paper?
I think that's under falls increasingly. Not raised. So much he uses for paper, kidding me.
That's what makes a good board, you can sit here and discuss now, and people really think. That's what makes a good board, you can sit here and discuss now, and people really think. That's why I think this works so well. I've been on boards where it didn't work well.
Always not to agree, that's why you discuss.
Wow, you could discuss it, you know, and, and then. I'm gonna think like, Aaron, I was. Twenty thousand, are you kidding me? I wouldn't talk to people, I'm sitting there going, wow. Really, not a bad idea.
I would like when she eventually sends that to you.
Yeah, because it's volunteer.
Well, that's the same thing with rescue squads. You have some volunteers and some paid, yeah?
Yeah, they have. They have, uh, three volunteers and two, one full-time, one part-time, and ten of them are on per view.
And two are leaving. Yeah, two are going in, yeah.
Nine point seven six percent increase.
Nine point six?
Nine point seven six.
I think that's.
A good chunk, it was.
Yeah, under ten. Actually, it's a solid budget.
Bunch of fluff in there.
There isn't any fluff in there.
Did you happen to see, um, on training for everybody, was that a big cost efficient from the computer guy?
I haven't had a chance to even think about it.
I just, I can't imagine it being a big price item, but who knows, in the scheme of things, if.
I think that's a good solid budget, people, but.
And what, what you pay for.
It's up to you guys, we'll have to, uh. Get together before our next meeting, scheduled meeting, and approve this budget. So that we can put it on the ballot, so we'll have it. A legal vehicle for us. Everybody okay with it right now, where it stands? Val, you okay with it? Alan? All right? You okay where it stands? Let's do this, Paul, we'll write it up, and, and we can, uh. Approve this budget. Put it on the ballot.
Are you feeling good about the budget, Paul?
Um, not really. Okay, so we have to meet sometime next week then.
One day is good for everybody.
Do we do the twenty-seventh before our select board meeting again?
Yeah, he's gotta. He's gotta be done before twenty-four.
So it'll just be a budget meeting, obviously?
It'll just be to approve.
We're doing the twenty, is the twenty-third too late for you?
Um, no, I should be okay.
About Thursday and twenty-third?
Well, that's your town, oh, it isn't, the town is this Thursday, or village.
Village, yeah.
You can't do Monday, the twentieth, maybe?
It's my little king day.
Can we do the twenty-first, just to get it so that it isn't right to the deadline?
Chamber meeting.
But we'll, at four-thirty, what time's your chamber meeting? It's only gonna take us five minutes to come in and.
Sure it is, nothing's ever taken us five minutes. Four-thirty and tw- four-thirty on the twenty-first?
Can you do that, Paul?
Yeah.
You okay, Alan? Twenty-first, four-thirty.
Tuesday the twenty-first, four-thirty.
Good, and that one's out of the way. Okay. Why here a motion to adjourn the budget, special budget meeting?
To adjourn the special budget meeting.
Val's second, Paul, any comments or questions by the board? Call in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried or adjourned?